Everybody will call the, uh...
I was the first one here.
This one's meeting's in order.
You are.
Let me know for you all there's a copy of the meetings act over here and for the record we're going to run the room, Chris Rogers, County Board.
Tara Duna, County Board.
Pam Murphy County Administration.
Kim Bolo, County Clerk.
Diane Allison, County Administration.
Jim Cabot, County Board.
Mark LaFlore, Douglas County Youth Center.
Janey Pancook, Operation Youth Success.
I'm Jamal Bynden, RED coordinators.
Sean Cooncare, Juvenile Assessment Clinic.
Uh, anybody on the side can say their name if they want, they don't have to.
Thank you, yes, that's great.
Okay, um, go ahead, I made, uh, DC was it, okay.
Where we currently are, uh, the information there breaks down our yearly admissions, uh, the average, uh, is eighty-one a month. Our, uh, length of stay, we're averaging, uh, forty days for a length of stay. Uh, a- average daily population, uh, yearly average, uh, we're sitting at seventy-six. Uh, for July, our admissions were seventy-one. Length of stay, uh, of course, we traditionally do length of stay, not including, uh, those individuals that are there, uh, twenty-four hours or less, and that represents twenty-seven. Uh, the forty-two point five represents, uh, when we include or exclude those individuals that are there twenty-four hours or less. And for July, our average daily, uh, population was eighty-two. For, uh, well, for, yeah, our average daily population was eighty-two. Uh, with regards to our current population, we're at, uh, seventy-seven at the youth center. Uh, we have twenty-four on the home program, uh, uh, one of those is on the tracker and one is on the truancy. With regards to our next parents' meeting, uh, that's scheduled for August fourteenth at six o'clock, and of course, that'd be at the youth center. Uh, this will actually be our last evening, uh, parent, uh, meeting. Uh, we seem to get a bigger response during the day, uh, you know, we really weren't sure. We started doing it in January, so we've had, uh, weekends, we've had during the week, and a now evening. So, uh, as we go forward, it looks like, uh, uh, weekends and, um, and days looks like our best time, and that's what we're gonna look towards. Our next parent-teacher conference is the week of, uh, the ninth through, uh, the thirteenth, and, uh, pleasingly, uh, our, uh, percentage is, uh, up to, uh, forty-five percent, so we, we hope to continue to see the, the increase with our numbers. We have our career fair, uh, that's scheduled for September twentieth, and of course, that career fair, uh, as mentioned, uh, and, uh, uh, when we're giving our report to the board, uh, we're targeting, uh, actual employers, uh, with the, uh, propensity to hire individuals. Now, the, the one caveat that we're working through is we still have, uh, no real idea when individuals are actually leaving, so there's gonna have to be some give and take, uh, when we're talking about, uh, employability, uh, for some of our youth, but, uh, this gives us a good place, uh, for them to recognize what opportunities are available for them to take advantage of. Uh, Dust to Dawn, uh, which had been part, uh, teamed up with the U-Turn with regards to gang prevention, uh, they'll be, uh, doing, uh, uh, more involved, uh, access, uh, for youth, uh, regarding, uh, violence and, uh, the consequences of violence and, and how it affects, uh, youth and families, and, and we'll be targeting, uh, specific units for that, uh, over the course of, of the next few months. Uh, I have information about the crisis response information. As, uh, many of you know, we, uh, had a crisis response informational session, uh, during the first week in July, and the purpose of said session, uh, was to be able to, uh, get additional information about what services are available, uh, through crisis response and Lutheran Family Services, and, and what's handed out is really a synopsis of that information. Uh, there's, uh, uh, meetings that are scheduled, uh, towards the middle and end of August, where that conversation is gonna be ongoing about, uh, what services are needed, uh, for what we're seeing, uh, some of our char- uh, challenges for mental health, and what would it take, uh, to expand, uh, services, uh, with regards to Lutheran Family Services, to see how, uh, we can take, uh, more advantage of, of the crisis response that's available. Uh, of course, we're, we're still in, we're still in communications with Charles Drew, uh, for additional mental health, uh, uh, services, uh, for our youth and families at the youth center, and, uh, we're still under the process of, uh, working with, uh, Creighton University to add additional psychiatric, uh, services for, for our, our youth, and, and both of those are still in draft form, uh, but hopefully there'll be more to report regarding those next month. And, uh, on just a side note, uh, Carla Dush and I, uh, from OIS, uh, went to the training for reimagining juvenile justice, and the rollout for the train-the-trainer training will be this month. We actually, uh, start, uh, we have our first rollout meeting on August eighth, and then there'll be, uh, other meetings to come where, uh, different system points will get an opportunity, uh, to figure out how they could use the positive youth development model that we had the training on, and it will, it will give everyone the chance to be, uh, self-reflective on how they can make things positive for youth, uh, where, where they come through their system point.
What do you mean, train the trainer, you mean, you all, this will be the first meeting since you all came back that you all are gonna start educating people around here? That's what you mean, train the trainer?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
So Thursday is our, um, informational meeting with the leadership team, and then from there, uh, a cohort will be developed of twenty-five to thirty individuals that will lead the train-the-trainer cohort that will go through the sixth module training.
So you all going for twenty-five people together, train them to stand, train everybody around?
Correct, yes, sir.
Who, who's on that? Do you know, or is this...
That'll come from the leadership team.
Who's leadership?
Um, well, we, we have quite a few. Uh, we have, uh, probationist represented, the public defender, uh, Omaha Public, uh, the Police Department, OPS, uh, the Juvenile Assessment Center is on the list, Charles Drew is on the list, um, along with, uh, a cou- couple of school districts, I know, uh, Westside, uh, school district is on the list, along, uh, I've mentioned OPS, uh, is Helpline, I don't think Helpline...
The rest are Helpline, we have, like, Urban League, uh, which is in the Midlands, um, we have, uh, Judge Taylor, Judge Brown, um, obviously, there's some, like, as Mark mentioned, UZ, H and J.
And the Native American, uh, group as well. So we, we actually have sixteen identified, and, uh, that rollout meeting is, uh, this Thursday, twelve o'clock, uh, in the, uh, fifth floor or sixth floor conference room.
So that, that, I forget, that trip you all took was, was a JJI sponsored trip?
No, that, that was, uh, under the School and Main Institute.
In partnership with JJI.
In partnership.
Okay.
But really has, uh, some really tremendous insights, there's, uh, six different areas that we'll be addressing, and, uh, folks should be able to walk away with something, uh, that they can do at their own particular system point, uh, similar to, uh, when we came back from our, from our training.
Um, anybody else got a question? All right, sounds good. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, all right, an update from the Juvenile Assessment Center, I've mentioned before in this, um, meeting, we, we always have studies going on, and two of the studies I've mentioned before, one, that the Juvenile Justice Institute has done on victimization and law violating, has gone to publishing in the final draft, so that's available, as is the use of assessment and the risk needs responsibility model, that has gone to publication, so those are both available now and can be shared and presented on at this meeting. The assessment and risk needs responsibility model study was a, a really basic study of five years of the data of kids who have come through the Juvenile Assessment Center, and the matching of that risk assessment to the services and how successful kids are. The bottom line of those two studies, uh, that they have been able to substantiate, those kids who have been a victim of some crime or a victim in some way, break the law at a younger age and break the law more often than someone who doesn't have victimization, as well as, um, kids who are underserved break the law at a quicker rate than kids who don't get the interventions they need, so you wanna make sure you get the interventions to kids. Those are real, real basic studies, so they're piggybacking on that one. JJI's doing a second study, where they're bringing in some more partners, more university partners, to really look at the exact domain, so, um, a- as you all know, in our risk assessment, there's eight domain areas that we look at, kids' lives, and they're drilling down into those domain areas and saying, those risks, is it in peers, is it in families, is it in education, where, where are we needing to really match those risks? What are the highest risk areas where kids then reoffend, and it's all about risk to reoffend, so...
Go back and say that, go, that thing you just said about underserved and over-served, just say that again.
So they're finding, they, they found in that first, in that basic study, that if a youth was underserved, they would recidivate at a higher rate than if a youth got more services. So if, if you, you came into, uh, the assessment center and you had a high need, for instance, you needed something therapeutic, but you were instead issued a warning letter, then you have, uh, greater opportunity to recidivate, to come back into the system than if we met your need initially. We wanna make sure we meet the needs of kids, so that they don't come back to the system.
But the YLS will pick that up, right?
It, y- yes, it's supposed to pick that up, we have to consistently study that, it's the YLS will tell us the risk, and then, and then we have to find programs in the community that meet that need area.
So what is this, like, a, a regular kind of validation, I think, to make sure it's what we're supposed to do?
It is, it's a pretty deep level, local validation of that, so it has been validated for the diversionary population, this is gonna be a local validation of that. Yes.
To make sure what it says really is what it says?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, yes, so that'll be, that's a, a little far out, but the other two are available right now for, for reading. We also have another study that's about to start with the Center of Justice Research at, uh, UNO, and Dr. Ryan Spawn is gonna be doing a deep dive specifically looking at race and ethnicity and matching services to, to, um, success rates of, of diversion and looking around the demographics of kids, so there will be more to come on that, and he'll come to this, I do a very poor job of describing his research, so he'll have to, he'll have to come do a much better job of that. He's just starting that, they, they...
So the core is racial and ethnic disparities?
Yes, yes, and, and Dr. Spawn is, of course, on the capstone, the Georgetown capstone, for RED. Uh, the other study, which has been presented here in March, year one of the Category One Consulting Study, uh, the two-year, they presented here in March their initial findings. We're currently deep into the data piece of year two, and we've used the year one research to revamp a lot of the things we're doing on assessment at the, at the Juvenile Assessment Center currently. So, uh, over the last six months, we've had a professional trainer come in to work with our staff group, very intentionally using the results of the year one study to rework our assessment process, to really make it youth-centered, family-centered, and we've used motivational interviewing techniques to ask open-ended questions, to really get at what the risk and needs of our, um, young citizens are, and we've just rolled that out in conjunction with a lot of enhancements to our data management system, so that we're capturing the right data points to be able to share what our impact is. We've added data points, we've added a lot of extra security, so we've been working on that pretty intensively over the last couple months, the, the data management system. The staff group has also done, um, quite a bit of training, uh, regarding, um, trauma in the community, everyone has been retrained in trauma again in April and May of this year. We try and participate in that training twice a year if at all possible, and it was available through Region Six, and so everyone took advantage of that, and then we have a, a large two-day training coming up in September with youth lived experience, and so, in addition to those basic surveys we've received through the other survey, through the other evaluations, uh, the Sherwood Foundation has funded the Youth Lived Experience Project where they're having very deep-level discussions with kids who have gone through the system, now some of those kids have been in child welfare, some in juvenile justice, some in both, at all levels of the system, and those folks are gonna come in and train us on what works best for kids, what doesn't work for kids, from the kids themselves and at, at a pretty deep level, so we're gonna be doing that, um, in the month of September, and are really looking forward to that feedback.
Sounds like having teenagers at home.
Right, kind of, kind of, exactly, so we're looking forward to that, so, um, and, and really just putting all of that together, you know, when, when we receive information about what is most helpful, and especially when there's some research basis in that, we really try and fold that into our processes and practices, uh, so wanna let this group know about that. And then, I wanna, just quick, cover our member trends, this is the information that I typically give out in this meeting, and this'll be, uh, scan of the last two calendar years, and then also a reflection of just this past quarter and what that quarter looked like a year ago, same quarter, the fourth quarter of the last fiscal year. The kids coming to the assessment center via the county attorney's office for delinquency offenses, we're, we're on track, uh, this, between three and four hundred kids are coming a quarter, that has not changed. We are assessing, uh, kids at the same rate, that has not changed, um, diverting kids at the same rate, we're, we're not seeing a, a change really in the numbers of kids coming in or being diverted. In truancy, uh, we just finally received the last truancy from the schools for this last school year, and we're right at fourteen hundred again, so we were at fourteen hundred, then twelve hundred, then fourteen hundred, and a quick note on truancy, for those fourteen hundred kids, that a formal truancy gets to the county attorney's office, only about three hundred of those kids are diversion-eligible, about a third of those are, are young kids, so those matters might be considered family matters, they wouldn't be considered on, on the youth or adolescent, and, uh, quite a few of those kids are already court-involved for other matters, or, uh, already on probation for other matters, so when you take those kids out of, of the referral bucket, you get about three hundred kids who we will be meeting with here at the start of this school year, trying to, trying to put some interventions in place to, um, improve school attendance and academic success for the upcoming school year. We're working really closely with all of the districts, we always meet with all of the district's social workers or the equivalent at the beginning of the year to talk about the processes, how we can work as a team for those kids who do reach that level with us, so we're gearing up in that area. And the only other thing I, I wanna make sure to mention here, in the past, one of the main interventions we have put, um, on case plans for those kids who are formally diverted is behavioral health over, we're, right at about sixty percent of our kids have a behavioral health intervention, and some of those kids are pretty high-level needs, they need intensive family preservation, and we have lost the funding for that, and so we're, we're seeking that, and as, as, um, especially as the board will keep that on their radar, if you could, for us, we're looking at ways to supplement that, but we're gonna have some issues serving those kids with behavioral health needs over this coming year, so...
Okay, what's that, what side of this is the front, which one?
The side that, okay, so the side that has the narrative on the bottom reflects the youth that are referred to our office for delinquency matters, and then, when you flip it, that side talks about the youth that we have assessed and then were formally placed on diversion at the approval of the county attorney's office, those are the kids we're case-managing. Toward the bottom of the sheet, you'll see the diversion completions in those time periods, the warning letters, so for kids who don't need a formal diversion, the, those are the warning letters, then you see youth impact indicates those dual status youth, involved in both child welfare and juvenile justice. Status referrals are the parents who are asking for the system to take over, um, guardianship of their child, and we're trying to put services in place to assist them, and then those truancy referrals, it's a strange year breakdown, those are the school years, those aren't fiscal or calendar year, that's of those school years, total referrals that came in.
So this page with the narrative is just kids assessed?
Those are kids referred for assessment.
Referred for assessment.
For delinquency, not truancy.
Thirteen hundred and, well, twelve hundred last year, one thousand of them were assessed, so of the other, like, two hundred or so, we assume that, like, say if you go through the place here, that's what I'm saying?
Right, right.
The gap is, should I say, at the top, uh, one thousand two hundred twenty-two initially referred, but only a thousand ended up being assessed.
Right, now this is a snapshot.
Okay, what, what would have, what would have possibly happened to the other two hundred?
Those are kids who have either picked up a new violation in the meantime that was more serious, i- in other words, have been...
From the time of being referred until they actually got it.
Right, right, so that can happen, kids move, uh, if we find out kids are, uh, under the court's jurisdiction already, then, that, that isn't always caught up, right, at the county attorney's office, sometimes that's not caught until it gets to our office, um, so move, uh, there are kids who refuse to come in, uh, refuse assessment, refuse diversion,
Cause the version is voluntary?
It's all the, it's all voluntary, none of this is in the court process.
So, um, how long has it taken now from a, a kid being referred to be assessed till they actually get, be assessed?
So from the time county attorney sends them to our office to the time, till the time of assessment?
Yeah, till they actually get assessed.
Two to three weeks, you, right at three weeks right now.
Is that long?
Oh, yeah.
What's the rationale for that, Larry?
It, it is our staffing and the amount of kids that we have.
Anybody else?
On the, uh, breakdown that you have here relative to race, um, I was trying to compare that with the breakdown to the racial composition of the population of Douglas County Youth Center, but I'm no mathematician, it appears that this is a majority-minority compilation of youth, is that accurate?
I believe so, um, so the majority of youth that we have coming in?
Right, so for instance, um, um, we were talking down here about the, the monthly youth center report that we get, the most recent one showed the minority population of the youth center representing over seventy-five percent of the kids there, okay? And I haven't had a chance to do the quick math here, but do you know the percentage representation, it appears that minority children represent more than fifty percent of the youth represented here.
Right, these are the actual numbers.
Yeah, right, and we get the actual numbers from the youth center as well, but you don't know the actual percentages, is that right?
No, not off the top of my head.
Right, sure.
Right.
I'd be interested in that, I mean, of course, I could sit down and crunch these numbers, um, but I was never a math whiz in, in school, it's just something that, you know, we track, and you referenced, I, I think, uh, earlier about some of the studies looking at disproportionate representation, okay? This is chronic, this doesn't go away, as far back as I can see, and, you know, the question is, okay, what is it, and we need to recognize it and put it on the front burner, and then, why is it? And it shouldn't be that way, children are children, you know, and it doesn't make any difference what race you are, you're not even better or worse than any other kids, I don't think, so why are we seeing disproportionate racial representation among minorities in this process? Any clue?
I certainly can't answer that, I think...
Well, I mean, in your process, in the...
In, in our process, these are the kids who had law violations, who were not already court-involved, so if a youth had a law violation, not already court-involved, they're coming our way, so these are the youth who received citations and are coming to the system via the front end of the system.
And you have no control over that, we recognize that, any more than the youth center has any control over who comes to their doorstep.
Right, a- and we can't make an assumption of, on why, I, I, I can't...
No, I understand, and, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just saying, it's important that we recognize this, because it's a chronic, ongoing problem, thank you.
But it's safe to say that? Yeah, it's chronic, but, yeah, I mean, I wish somebody had said bulletproof, the, the points of, the major points of entry are the police and the county attorney, for your system, for your system, it's county attorney, they make that call, and the police make the call, the attorney to the county attorney, and... When, when is, have you all, is that OPS meeting set, yeah? Or when they set that, the one that they usually have?
Where they talk to the folks about the attendance?
Yeah, and I guess the, the services and, and how they work that, have they set...
I haven't heard the dates for that yet, from Kim, I've heard that.
Uh, let me know when that, when that happens, uh, and for everybody, I guess OPS has this meeting at the beginning of each year, or I guess they bring in service providers that work with the, they still call them SPAS?
Uh, they call them SSLs now, I can't tell you what it stands for.
Um, well, wherever the people that work through the process of connecting services to kids, so that's, that's what I'm referring to in that meeting, when they have all of the services outside presented to them, so when they have options to, to deal with that, so, okay. Now go back through this, I got, you listed, I got the Juvenile Justice Study, the Center for Justice Research, Category One, is, did you say one more?
We have the two that wrapped up, we have one that's about to start, and another one...
JJI and the Center for Justice Research?
And then the category, so we have three current studies that are just underway, one through the Juvenile Justice Institute, one through the Nebraska...
And that is...
That's gonna be that validation study, basically, that's...
Validation of the, um...
YLS.
YLS, okay, all right, Center for Justice Research is, is the RED study?
Yes.
Category One, I know what that is, what's the other?
That's it, those three.
Okay, all right, all right. So this year, Category One, when they finish this year, they'll be giving results on what is recommended to go next level or to serve better, that's what this is about?
Correct.
That's due in, eight, August, I mean, October, they'll be done?
At the end of this year, I, I don't recall the date.
So they'll be, so this won't be ready, ready until sometime like next year first quarter?
Right.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, are you talking to the YLS? I want my phone to be ready. No, wait, are you...
Okay, thank you, Chris. The Operation Youth Success Steering Committee will meet next Thursday in Jesse Low Conference Room from eight-thirty to eleven. Ajamal's gonna present on the RED capstone, Tara Luna will be fi- presenting their final report on their evaluation of the work of OYS, and there'll be some discussion about the purpose of OYS moving forward, and then also, uh, membership to the Steering Committee discussion, those are kind of the, work groups also report out, each work group, from the families, prevention, school-based arrests, um, policy advocacy, we share the RED group that officially was renamed in data, anyway, those, all those work groups also report out at that meeting of, of all the excellent work they are doing. Currently, the Juvenile Justice Council, which is comprised of juveniles with lived experience, are hosting their leadership conference, it's the first one, um, so far, we're into day two, and it's still going, so I'm gonna take that as a test, twenty-five young people, uh, that are getting speakers from name the gamut of services, uh, lived experience folks, how do we support them, uh, the work groups have all really stepped up in helping provide lunches, breakfast, help clean up, take the garbage out, whatever's required to help, hopefully have a really good, um, experience there with them. The fan, we are actually, actually in the initial stages of similar, a family council is forming, so that'll be comprised of family members, and we're really almost focusing initially on grandparents of youth that had the experience in the juvenile justice system, so trying to get that families council together, again, they're, they're the experts in what works well and what doesn't work well, and our volumes of information that can help us do our work better and help inform our work groups and the Steering Committee, so hopefully we'll get that going here. So hopefully we'll get that going here in the fall. Continue to work with the LGBTQ capstone group, which is representative of system stakeholders that went to Georgetown last October. And we're getting together, trying to get a, a training together and best practice policies regarding a template for that that could be adopted by different stakeholders regarding that. And other, and they're actually starting to collect data at probation with the Juvenile Assessment Center's on the cusp of that, collecting data to see what the population looks like. And then filling in those gaps, what services and supports we can best provide. And then the last piece is OYS is beginning to spearhead a restorative justice practices group with Concord Mediation and some other community and system stakeholders. Again, the Juvenile Assessment Center's a part of that right now. Probation will be coming in, Omaha Police, the schools, et cetera. But really trying to focus on restorative justice practices, younger, sooner, before, hopefully we can start being very on the prevention side before it even gets to the point of the county attorney and getting referred to Sean. And, and also, you know, actually healing, heal- healing the harm that was caused. When Sean talked about the victimization, a, a child is victimized, they're more likely to then become an offender or, you know, cause harm. And so if we can heal those wounds, you know, in a safe fashion through restorative justice practices, hopefully we can move the ball forward as, as minimizing the trauma and the impact on that and keeping youth out of more formal systems. Any questions?
So on this restorative justice point, this Concord group?
Concord Mediation.
Tell me about them a little bit, would you?
Yeah, so they are actually, I would say, close to, there's probably other entities, but very close to the expert of restorative justice practices, mediation, talking circles, those pieces. They actually have been funded at times through community-based aid to, to be in the schools already and try and implement restorative justice practices in schools. And they kind of are the, again, I'll just lean into the expert in the arena of what that could look like, train facilitators, if we needed to train more facilitators. Yeah, so they're excellent to work with.
Are they local?
Yes, yeah. I don't know how long they've been around, quite a while. Yeah.
Good. And they're working in OPS, you say?
They have, and they're still trying to obviously gain more schools. They see lots of opportunity there.
Exciting.
Yeah, very, very. I agree. Thank you.
So anybody else? All right, I'm gonna come back, I'm gonna merge C with other business and some other updates here and here. But item two is just to tell you all until the board. So I've sat down with Sherwood a couple of times to work through the letter that was part of everything. So after some discussion with them, and Patrick and I have been discussing this, you're gonna start floating, Patrick is gonna work through a draft based on some conversations that we had with Ramsey County. Ramsey County is basically St. Paul, Ramsey and Hannah, Pinnon, St. Paul, Minneapolis, Twin Cities. And so they've given us a description of something they have. Patrick had a shell of that. So one of the agreements we, we talked about in the letter with Sherwood was that deputy county administrator that would just do Ju- drive that and everything that's there. So Patrick's gonna start showing that out. And at some point when it gets it out, we'll distribute it to you all for employees, just so everybody knows. The goal that we talked about to some degree is trying to, if that thing gets solidified sometime in September or so, to put it out nationally, to see what's what, with the goal of having somebody on January. The piece that Karen and I have talked about is that with the agreement with that five million, we would float it in with some support for that and then be able to try to budget it in next year. So if you hear talk about that, that's what that is, to try to start working through that process and making that flow. For other bits with three, a myriad of things, let me start with C. So Shelley and those guys could be here today, but they've got some realignments with the co-chairs and some of those committees, and one of them is case processing piece. And case processes is, is pretty much the committee that works through trying to maybe get processes through the court more efficient. So there's a couple of new co-chairs there. One is Tony Hernandez from the county attorney's office and Lauren Willeck from the public affairs office. That's relevant to us because, just so you know, there's a meeting that Mark Morse sold is supposed to happen with those two co-chairs, Greg, Shelley, myself, you can sit in. Through the course of the year with that discussion, there's the feedback that they've been giving about the cost per night and stuff. So first on that, I'm gonna make some recommendations to you all on that prescription and how to tweak it out for the first year after things have been worked out and see how you, how we make that move a little better. So just so you know, if you hear about that.
Great.
Also, there is, for the, if you hear about this, there's a meeting that we're gonna have, I think, Thursday, just so you know. And you can, if I'm out of, if I miss anything, tell them. So we got a federal grant to start the DMC position. There is, based on the feedback of the grant that was submitted, there were some things that they want us to change in regards to what the money in the second year of the grant's used for. So we're having a meeting Friday with probation. The DMC chairs have been welcomed. Also, the grant administrators, and I think somebody from the JAG will come just for, there's a pot of money, which I think may be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so. Close to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and we, we do, reallocate for services. And we gotta do this pretty quick. So basically, based on those recommendations from that group, we're gonna talk about what the need is to try to reduce the racial ethnic disparity in the city, the system and what services are needed to try to reduce that, and that, we're gonna put that in the grant. And we submit it, so if you hear that, that's part of it. There's also.
Is that Thursday, a Thursday meeting?
I think it's Thursday. I haven't got it from, yeah, Thursday, about three thirty or something. So pretty much, just sort of, this is, we're trying to get feel for people to make the recommendation. I don't know if it's a board call, it's pretty much what we put in the grant, but based on that feedback from those people, pretty much hopefully the JAG, because of diversion and then probation's feedback from some of the ways they enter in, see if there's an opportunity to use that money for that. So if you hear that, that's it, it's nothing, we will, like, so-called approve, but if you hear, that's the rationale for it. Also, just to know, out of that grant, I think we're waiting for the Fed approval to okay the RFP. That's my understanding, I think, from what I read.
Right, right.
So there's part of the first year's grant was a RFP, a comprehensive study that's gonna be done in the system, to do a study of the DMC points in the system from every part. There was a group of us that met to vet the RFPs. We, we picked a group, but right now, we're waiting for the Fed to okay it. If that happens, there'll be some effort there to try to really get up and analyze whether the, the, the racial ethnic disparities points are in the system. And the whole heart of that is to give some hard recommendations to us. And if that happens, just know that we'll be on the board to group really strong. So if you hear that, that's what that's about. And also, just data agreement-wise, we're trying to, the juvenile court bench is turned over, meaning that Judge Kayler is known on presiding, Judge Brown is presiding judge. So he and I, he, Kayler and Judge Brown are gonna be to try to, you remember that presentation of Yowback that was done with Promise and some of the data stuff? We haven't been able to get through the courts in respects to how do we get the data. So I'm trying to be with them to get this hashed out data-wise. But also, next week when we don't have a board meeting, there's gonna be a meeting between OPD, probation, and us and Teresa to try to really hone in the flow of data so we can start really digging in to the analytics of this to really get some real data-driven stuff when this, the program piece after has to be again. So I just want you all to know that, just in case any of that's heard, that's what's what, and we're going from there. So with that, that's pretty much it to some degree for the, for that. And a lot of these, a lot of these other things are crossed in a lot of meetings. So if you all want to go to over here, that's, there's a lot of people in the group around those tables to some degree. And I've tried to use this just as much to put the board up the speed on some questions. So the first Thursday of every other month, I think the last meeting was last week with JDI. All board members welcome to come here and listen to that. And then the OYS meeting happens the third Thursday of every month at Jesse Low. Every other month, this month is that meeting. So that's where some specific stuff gets there and goes from there. So with that, that's all I got.